Welcome to this week's edition of the Bello Report. I'm Jane Bello. Tonight, we have the last of our candidates for city and county election. And these are the two finalists for seat...
Seven.
Seven.
District seven.
Yep.
And we are really excited to have had all the candidates and are grateful for all their efforts in running for these offices. And we want to thank Mark Tyne and Wally Allegham.
Awesome.
And they are two candidates, are two finalists for seat seven on the Homestead County Board of Commissioners. And Mark Tyne is an incumbent and the challenger is Wally Allegham. All right, Wally, you won coin toss and you get to go first with your opening statement.
Sure, appreciate it, Jane, and appreciate the opportunity to be here. So my name is Wally Allegham and I'm an American immigrant, came here at the age of 21, and my journey was not an easy one. I had no access to financial aid or student loans and had to pay my way through college, you know, a lot of hard work, sacrifice, also some luck. You know, we all tend to forget about the luck part, but you know, I've been blessed and lucky. And basically, you know, the reasons why that I'm running is really to make sure that Homestead County is a great place for everyone to live and work. I have three kids, I've been married for 14 years to Dr. Audrey Allegham, got a wonderful family, and basically, you know, I've been really blessed. I serve as a Director of Strategy Management Services in Mayo Clinic, the Vice President of the Rochester Branch NDOACP. I've also been blessed to be a TED Talk speaker, very active in the community, President of the Lacrosse Product Management Chapter. So when it comes to business, when it comes to strategy, governance, I have a lot of experience. I've served in a lot of for-profit and for-profit organizations, you know, and for me, it's really just, my motivation is about service, you know, where can I put my skills for the betterment for everyone, you know, and that's some of the reasons why I'm running for Homestead County. The other reason is really just to make sure that, you know, when we look at, you know, affordable housing issues, when we look at, you know, just the whole local economy, COVID-19, how are we going to get through this, you know, as a community, law enforcement and race relations? So there's a lot of issues that we need to work on, and I bring a diverse and fresh perspective to help us move into that. And I have over 20-plus years of professional experience. Prior to working in Mayo Clinic, I worked at Ashley Furniture, the largest home furniture manufacturer in the world, so I have a lot of experience dealing with large, complex projects. But the community aspect, the people part, that is really at its core, and I think that we need to make sure that we listen to our community, we need to make sure that we engage our community in decisions, and just looking to serve. So really appreciate the opportunity, Jane, to be here, and appreciate Mark too, so thank you.
All right, Mark Tyne, your opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Mark Tyne, I'm finishing my fourth year as Homestead County Commissioner for District Seven. I'm born and raised in Rochester. I graduated and went to St. Thomas where I got a degree in business education, or business management, and a minor in economics. I came back home and started working for my family business, Tyne Well Company. I'm a fourth-generation water well driller, fully licensed in the state of Minnesota. We've been in business since 1893, so I take great pride in running our family business. I'm married to formerly Jenny Jacobson from Chatfield. We just celebrated our 28th anniversary two days ago. We live in Orinoco Township. We have three adult children, Katie, who just got married a week ago, and she's a speech pathologist in Anoka-Hennepin School District, Abby, who got married last year and is a special education teacher in Anoka-Hennepin School District, and Peyton, our youngest, is a senior in college pre-law at Michigan State University. Prior to running for the county board, I served 17 years, first as a supervisor and then as a chairman of the Orinoco Township Board, and I think I bring a voice of common sense to the Homestead County Board, and I thank you for your support so far, and I hope for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Okay, now the questions will be the same to both of you, and we will alternate between the two of you, and Mark, we will start with you. And why are you seeking another term as Homestead County Commissioner, either one main agenda item or for other reasons?
Well, I think I bring a unique voice to the Homestead County Board, first in that I have a strong township connection, so for the rural voters, I understand the issues that townships face and the small towns face, so I bring that perspective and experience to the board, but I also bring a small business perspective, so I look at things from a different perspective than some of my colleagues on the county board. In addition, I think a strong sense of common sense, so I'm not out to win little petty battles, I just want what's best for our constituents, even if it costs us a little money in the short term, if it's a smart thing to do, then I'm in favor of it, so that's why I'm seeking another term.
Okay, and Wally Allegham, why are you seeking seat on the Homestead County Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, so first of all, I'm running not against Mark, you know, I'm running for us, and so that's been something that I've been really clear on. When I look at the issues, we have a lot of room for improvement in Homestead County. You look at affordable housing, you know, three years ago, Rochester, which is part of Homestead County, was the second worst in the nation. When you look at law enforcement and race relations, you know, we have a lot of room for improvement there. When you look at even homelessness, there are a lot of improvements there, and you look at health disparity with COVID, you know, so there's a lot of work that we need to do. So in terms of my priorities for Homestead County, which is what I want to focus on, number one is really increase access to public health services and social services program, and the reason why that's important is really this, we need to make sure that we take care of our people first, we need to take care of our health. You know, after that, you know, another priority for me is really our COVID economic recovery because we need to also take care of businesses, and I have business experience, you know, I actually set up my own business from the ground up, that was mentioned in the INC. 2000 edition, 2007 edition of INC. 5000, so I have, you know, product management experience, I have business experience, and basically making sure that we have the right infrastructure to lift everybody up. You know, my campaign, I talk about one community together, and it's more than a slogan, it's something I truly believe, I believe we're best when we're one community, serving together. The other thing is really this, you know, other priorities would be diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need to make sure we have great opportunities for not just, you know, our white folks, but black folks, Asians, Latino, and we have room for improvement in Homestead County there. And when you look at also Rochester and the city and the rural areas, how can we attract business development opportunities that actually benefits, you know, and provides a strong advantage to our city and rural folks? So those are the things that I'm looking to do, but ultimately, it's really about service. Again, that's my motivation, running for all of us, not running against Mark, and so that's sort of what I'd say, but I'm hoping people get to know me more, and yes, I am a new guy on the block, but in terms of my professional experience, it's been truly tested.
All right, Wally, what is the one single greatest question facing the Homestead County Board of Commissioners? Why is there more than one?
So there's more than one, right, because when you look at what the county does, the county, you know, and you have a lot of interconnected issues, so whether it's even housing, well, that plays into, you know, that plays into the economic stuff, but the one big stuff is really this, COVID, you know, and this is also aligned to what the county does, and the county is really critical for state mandated programs, so the main thing is really making sure we have increased access to public services, because I think if we can do that and make sure that, you know, we keep people safe as we get through the spend of COVID, then we have a better shot. But then we can't just focus on just people, we also have to look at businesses too, so it's a tag team, Jane, but my priority number one would be COVID, you know, how do we get out of this, and that's where the public services come into play.
Okay, Mark, what is the greatest problem facing the Homestead County Board?
Well, in 2021, I expected to be budget concerns, you know, counties are arms of the state, so we serve the people, so much of what we do is dictated by the state and partially funded by the state. We have approximately a $240 million budget, about 110 million of that is raised through property tax levies, the remainder is funded from the state and federal government. Well, I expect that they're going to be tightening their belts in the coming years as they're facing the repercussions of our economic slowdown, so our demand for services is going to be up because the economy's slowing down, people are dealing with COVID and unemployment, so demand is going to be up, and the flow of funds into the county is going to be down, so we're going to have to figure out how to meet our needs without raising property taxes. We can't tax people out of poverty, I mean, so every dollar we spend comes from a citizen somewhere, and we need to be smart with our money, so I would expect that we're going to have to tighten our belt a little bit, put the wants on the back burner, and deal with the needs in 2021.
If more funds are needed, the third question, would you favor increasing taxes? Would you seek fees? Would you try for more funds from the state or the federal government?
I think I'm first on this one. Well, more funds are almost always needed, but I don't, I'm not in favor of a property tax increase at this time. We just recently limited ourselves to a 0% property tax increase for this coming year, realizing that it's troubled times for many businesses and people, so we don't want to tax them out of their home or tax them out of business, so I'm not in favor of raising property taxes. Obviously, we have to provide needed services, so we're going to have to get rid of the things that aren't needed, concentrate on the things that are needed, and if we have to draw down some budget reserves, we could do it that way. Right now, we're AAA bonded county, we're rated AAA, only the top 3% of counties in this whole country are rated AAA. We've been very smart with our money, we do have good reserves that we could use in times of need like this, so I'm guessing that's what we will do.
Okay. Wally, where would you seek additional funding if the county is in need of funding with increasing the taxes or fees or the state or federal government?
Yeah, and I concur with Mark in terms of, you know, first of all, I'm not in favor of like a property or a tax increase. You know, with COVID and the economic downturn, you know, it would be a crush and blow to families and businesses, so that's definitely not the solution. I think we need to be creative, you know, and it also goes to prioritization, you know, when I talk about increased access to public services and social services program, we need to look at our budget and reprioritize, but that'd be the number one thing that I'd be looking at, you know, increasing those critical county services because we need it now more than ever. In terms of also looking at, you know, additional funding opportunities, I think we need to really partner with our local businesses, you know, are there additional grants, are there, you know, other things that we can do to provide more funding, so we need to explore all those options, but it is hard because everybody else is doing that, but we need to, you know, beg the federal government, you know, and the state, but in addition to that, we need to be really creative, but bottom line is really this, we cannot have a tax increase on folks because families are struggling, and we need to also support our businesses, so at the end of the day, you know, when we talk about wants and needs, you know, you know, all the things that I'm talking about, they're not wants, we need to have our health, you know, so we need to prioritize those, so those are the things that I'd be focused on.
This is a question we also asked from the city council when we interviewed them, and there are a lot of organizations that are helping with some of the city-county problems, like DMC, Destination Medical Center, the city, the county, RUDI, there are all kinds of organizations, and how do we better engender cooperation among the county board with, say, the city council and DMC especially, so that the communication lines are clear?
I think you first.
Yes, that's right.
So there needs to be strong collaboration, so when you're looking at, you have, there are not enough resources to go around, so we need to be really smart in terms of how do we prioritize our resources, and are there duplication of services that, you know, are there things that we can partner with the city on, so that way we're basically focusing our resources, getting the biggest bang, so to speak. I do believe in the vision of DMC, met with a lot of leaders, and, but there are unintended consequences, I mean, DMC is not, the vision is great, we obviously have to get through all these roadblocks to make sure that, you know, middle-class families aren't being squeezed, because, you know, when you look at affordable housing, there were some unintended consequences by DMC. So I do think that in terms of, to your question, we need to really pull our resources together from a city and a county, and then also work and collaborate with DMC. Now, I do think that when you look at the vision and you look at just, you know, people that have been hurt, we have families right now that, if you look at the median household income, I'd say the last I checked for at least for 2016 was maybe between 13 to 22, you know, there's no way you can afford a good home with that. Now, DMC is also going to attract a lot of businesses to Rochester and Homestead County, but we need to make sure that we're really prepped for that, and also that how do we make sure that our rural cities, Orinoco, Pine Island and such, you know, how do we make sure that they're part of the whole growth as well? So we have a lot of work to do, but bottom line is really, we need to really focus our resources, and if we can pull our resources better, that'd be really good. Other thing that I've mentioned, and Mark has heard this, and I've said that publicly too, is when it comes to business development, how do we ensure we attract new businesses, that maybe we can better collaborate with our rural folks, what are the resources they have, and we want to make sure that we attract businesses that complement our folks in Orinoco, Pine Island, and Rochester, and I think that's sort of how we can get those new business ideas into place, so. DMC is a good vision, great leaders, but we have a lot of work to do to make sure that it works for everybody, so.
Mark Tyne, how would you increase the cooperation and communication lines between the city and the county and DMC?
Well, I think it's crucial that we remember that we all serve the same people, and we're not competitive, we shouldn't be competitive against each other, we should work in unison to provide the services in the most efficient way possible, so I strive to develop personal relationships with my colleagues in the Rochester City Council, Orinoco City Council Mayor, all the townships, I'm a regular attendee at Township Officers' Association meetings, I know most of those township officers by name, city of Pine Island, probably 15 years ago, I was a founding member of the Pine Island Community Planning Team, we're local townships, and the city of Pine Island, and the city of Orinoco, and their library, and their parks department. We meet monthly just to basically talk, so we all know what each other is doing, and more importantly, we all develop a personal relationship with each other, so we can reach out when we have a question, or we have an issue, or there may be a potential conflict, and we work it out so that everything is seamless in front of everybody, but behind the scenes, we've done work to make it that way, and it's all developing relationships and understanding that we're not enemies, we're not, we shouldn't be enemies, we should be working together to provide services for the people is important. And I think it's helped, I'm a very nonpartisan person, so I don't care whether you're a Democrat or you're a Republican or anything, all I care is I just want to get the job done, so that's the way I operate.
Can DMC do anything special to help with the county business? I know that they've looked at small business help and trying to get the economic climate started again here, but that, and transit, they're looking at a transit program, and I'm sure they'll probably look at this library, what do you think?
Well, you know, DMC is by law focused on a certain geographical area of Rochester, and they cannot spend dollars outside of that area, so they can't help with many of the issues that the county faces, but they can help with affordable housing, the library and things like that, if it fits their vision and is within that footprint. It's a difficult balance, because DMC has done a great job of attracting new businesses and making Rochester attractive to young professionals, bringing people in, keeping us a vibrant community, it's done a great job of that, but unintended consequences are that it's tougher for people that have been here and businesses that have been here to be able to afford the rent, or it's a big change, you know, I like it, but it's a big change.
Okay, Wally?
Yeah, question again, Jane?
The question is, what can DMC do to help the county with its business? Its business is quite different from the cities because you have so much funded by the state and the federal government, there are social services, but what can DMC do to help you?
Yeah, so basically, I feel like the county, DMC, and the city, you need to have, you know, like a single vision in terms of a strategic plan, we need to make sure that all of our plans are aligned, you know, and by doing that, that's where you're focused on, you know, a lot of effort, you know, on strategic initiatives, so I'll say this too, I agree in terms of, you know, I'm serving not just, you know, it doesn't matter if you're a Republican, Democrat, or Independent, we're serving all of our constituents, so that's the focus. Now, going back to just the DMC, really, the unintended consequences are this really, you have, there was a lot of development that occurred in Rochester, at least was supposed to occur in Rochester, what we also saw was those developments that occurred outside of Rochester, so, and that affected some of the housing issues, but what can DMC do? It's really collaboration, but you just can't hope for people to collaborate, you need to have strong plans that are tied together, and I think if we are able to align, you know, better align DMC's vision with the county's vision, pull in resources, I think that's how we can actually make sure that we realize the DMC goal. So Jane, basically, it's really this, it's really we need to have a better, tighter control, we need to plan better, and also have community forums, because I've talked to a lot of folks in the community, you know, that have said, look, you know, DMC is great, I like this, but this is, you know, these jobs are, you're not bringing jobs that, you know, that I have the skills to do, or you're going to be attracting people coming from outside, and so we need to be able to make sure that we don't forget about the folks that are on the ground, and so, you know, having better community engagement, you know, and just making sure how do we, whether it's our schools, whether it's our small businesses, you know, or even improvement of county services and city services, what do we need to do? So I think it's just better collaboration, but at the end of the day, what I'd love to see is a strong strategic plan that is aligned between the city-county and DMC, and then we can start to measure and report back to the public.
Okay, Wally, our neighbors to the north in Minneapolis responded to some of the peaceful and not-so-peaceful protests by defunding the police department, and so that has become an issue with local governments, and do you have any thoughts about that?
Sure, sure. When people will talk about defunding the police, first of all, I'll say this, you know, I believe in the value of law enforcement, so Jane, I, as I said, I'm an American immigrant of Nigerian descent, my grandmother was a circumfemale police officer in Niger, I had an uncle, a vice admiral in the Nigerian Navy, he got assassinated, I have uncles that are in the Air Force, in the Army, so I definitely value what folks bring. When we look at what happened in the city, it was really very unfortunate with the deaths and murder of George Floyd. I've also been very vocal in terms of chokeholds, I don't want to see that, we still have that in here, and I think that when we talk about just race relations and trust, there's not a lot of trust with local minority folks and law enforcement. You know, you look at the diversity of the police force, you look at just community complaints, so we have a lot of work to do, and I'd be definitely in favor of the chokeholds. Now, in terms of defunding the police, you know, my focus really is, how do we provide more funding for police officers, you know, focus on important things like, what do you call it, community policing, social services, and I know that the county, we recently, I believe, hired three folks, social service people to help out, a lot more needs to be done, and the community has been complaining for a long time. Other things that we can do to foster more trust is, I know there's an accountability dashboard that has been built, but it shouldn't take the community to be, you know, really screaming for this, I mean, this is, we need to have more transparency and accountability in government, so that is my focus, but when we talk about what happened in Minneapolis, it was extremely bad, and I don't advocate any destruction of property, but it's also a false premise when we say that, hey, this were the folks, there were people in Minneapolis who were causing that, they actually came from outside, but we have a lot of work to do. If you want to really work through this law enforcement and race relation issues, you need people that can actually work together, and prior to coming to Rochester, I worked in Lacrosse, the Lacrosse Police Department, worked towards fighting hate crimes, and we made some great progress there, so I'm looking basically to do the same in Rochester.
Mark, would you support more law enforcement, less law enforcement, changes? Why are you simply...
Well, I'm not in favor of defunding the police, and I think there's an issue with what was going on in Minneapolis as compared to what is going on locally, I trust our leadership with Sheriff Turgis and Police Chief Franklin. I think what makes us more successful down here is that we think outside the box, as Wally said, Homestead County Board, we recently expanded a program to embed social workers with police, we expanded from one to four now, that will be available with the police and sheriff deputies to answer calls, and we're really, we're only one of three counties in the whole country that we know of that are doing this, and so when there are calls that aren't necessarily crime-related, they're caused by a mental health breakdown or a drug problem, we send out people that are trained to deal with these issues so that we can get these people the care they need, instead of either sending them to the emergency department where it's very expensive and it takes resources from Mayo Clinic to take care of them, or putting them in jail when really they just need some support and some mental health help, and I think, well, I'm proud of the measures we've taken, we've got very good leadership, and our county board has taken it seriously, so.
Yeah, and Jane, I'll just say this, I know Mark and I have talked about this in the past publicly, so I think there's a lot of stronger measures need to happen, and I've told Chief Franklin this, you know, Mayor Norton, I've said that to Mayor Norton as well, and even Sheriff Turgis, and, you know, we need to look at our policies, and these chokeholds definitely do not imbibe any trust, you know, we don't need that there, the police, the law enforcement, they have numerous other tools, and so those are, if we want to really make strong changes, we need to be more courageous, you know, this is not putting our law enforcement people at harm's way, but from the community perspective, people don't want to see that, and so, yes, we are not a Minneapolis, but we need to strive to be the best, and what are some of the things we can do? Strong investment in community policing, strong investments, more investment in the social workers, those are the things that I'd like to see.
Can I just say?
All right.
Because there's one thing that we differ on, so which is fair that we can bring up and talk about. So nobody likes a chokehold, and I'm not in favor of eliminating the chokehold from the toolbox for our police enforcement. And I'm not in favor of eliminating the chokehold from the toolbox for our police enforcement officers, because basically, that's the last tool in the box. You've tried numerous things, you've tried a taser, you're trying to subdue somebody who is harming somebody else. That's the last tool in the box before you resort to fatal means. So I don't want to move fatal means up a step by taking that chokehold out, which is, the chokehold is a, it's not a fun thing to see, but it's not a choke of the windpipe, it's a choke of the artery here, so it cuts out blood flow to the brain so that you go to sleep essentially, so they can control you. It's not fun to see. It's rarely used, but I'm not going to tell the police officers that I know more about it than the professionals.
It's rarely used, but it is used, and there have been numerous studies that show that it's disproportionately used against people of color, people of minorities. And there are definitely other, if we focus on de-escalation techniques, you know, those are better ways that the law enforcement should be focused on. So that is an area of difference. But look, I think if we just, you know, really focus on community policing, you get out there, you meet people, that's how you really provide trust. And, you know, there's numerous other tools in the toolboxes that are as effective, so.
Okay, we're out of time. And we're not going to have time for like your closing statements. But we want to give you a chance to at least tell people where they can reach you, and we'll start with you, Wally.
Or Mark, because I started.
No.
I can go first.
No, but this is the ending.
Okay, sure, sure. So Jane, appreciate the opportunity. Mark, cordial as usual, so I really appreciate it. So, you know, I'm running because I really want our community to be better. And I, you know, in Rochester, you know, in District 7, which, you know, comprises of, you know, our rural areas, Rochester, people have good hearts. So, you know, my goal is really to lift everybody up. I have a lot of experience in business and strategy and product management in the community. You know, and my goal is really to make sure that we build a community that works for everybody. You know, I want us to use our tax dollars in efficient ways to foster more trust in our community. So asking for your vote, my motivation again is about service. You know, it's how do I use my skills and experiences over the years to make it better for all of us? You can go to my website, walemn.com, that's W-A-L-E-M-N dot com, to learn more about me. But I'll say this, as I've been going throughout the community, just talking to people, it's been just great to hear people's concerns and people's values. And so just want to be part of the solution. So thank you.
Okay. Mark Tyn, your closing statement.
Sure. I want to thank Wally for running. As I've said numerous times before, I think it's important that people have choices on their ballots. There's nothing more discouraging than seeing one name and then a write-in. People should have choices. This is a very important position. I take this job very seriously. In my first four years, I've missed zero county board meetings. I show up for work, I get stuff done. I'll do it again if you reelect me. Thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you both. Wally...
Thank you.
And Mark...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And thank you for running for these offices. And this brings us to a conclusion of all of our city and county candidates, and we will hope that you will vote. Thank you for being with us, we'll be with you again next week, same time, same time. Have a good week and a good night.
That's fun.
Yeah, fun.